It is. It's defined as Exhibit C, the red parcel. This. You'll see here it's labeled as reverter parcel down in the left-hand corner.
Are you saying that we can't define? If this is the first time the words reverter parcels?
It's not. It's in your draft that the city approved as the final draft.
Which paragraph?
It's at the very, I believe, one of the last sentences of that paragraph. Again, this is in an effort to keep everything to a minimum, this only portion.
I'm okay with this language. I don't have a problem.
I thought you would be. I'm not trying to change anything. I'm just trying to make it a one-step clear language.
I'm okay with it.
All right. Are we kind of okay with that?
Okay. So, I guess based on that, I would ask that we get a positive vote to change-
Is this the only change in the contract itself?
Yeah, this and then the right of first offer.
And that's it?
And that's it. That's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna accept the rest and leave you all alone and I'm gonna go do what I do and let you guys be happy that you supported it.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I do have one more change, but this is a change that they recommended and I agree is acceptable. It's in paragraph 23 and-
Of the purchase agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
And the language that you proposed is a correction of what actually was probably a typographical error in the original draft. And words or refusing to take any action should be stricken because that's sort of like unnecessary. So it would read similarly, "The parties shall refrain from taking any action which may be reasonably necessary to..." Wait, there's a word "not" that's missing, I think.
Okay. My counsel said that we're fine with that change.
So not refrain.
I can't-
Anyway, it's a, it's a, yes. I'm okay with that, but I wanted to make it clear that that's gonna need to be changed.
Okay, so we have three changes, yes?
I would like to make a motion that we accept the first right of refusal.
It's been moved. Does anyone wish to second that?
I'll second it.
Can we talk about it a little bit more? Can we discuss?
Well, it's been moved and seconded. Now we can discuss.
Moved and seconded. It's their discussion. Rachel?
Oh, I'm still on the fence about it, only because we've had to revert the property. That's my main concern with it.
I'm-
Yes, Nancy?
Kind of there at the same time. I think the situation, I anticipate the situation would be different than it is today. So if we, if the, if the property reverted, it's probably because of lack of action. So are we going to want to sell it back to somebody who's not doing something? I don't know.
If it reverts back to them, it's only gonna be because of some catastrophe, you know, financial crisis, I believe, or something like that. And, you know, in the, in the big picture, nobody else is gonna buy it anyway because it's all in the middle of what they have and what are they gonna be able to do. So by doing that, we're really like lowering the price that we could, we're not even gonna have any competition because nobody else is gonna buy it. So then they could swoop in and say, you know, oh, well, it's not worth anything. Because, I mean, really, look at it. Who's gonna buy it?
Because we're talking just about the parking lot parcels at this point.
Well, where the-
It's the reverter, yeah.
Reverter, yes.
Two red areas.
Yes, the two red areas.
I mean, I guess just because there's so many unknowns out there, I'm leaning toward not including it because of the length, the term. I mean, this could happen in 75 years from now. So I guess I'm inclined to not include it.
Any other comments? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve. What are we approving here? We are approving the right of first refusal. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Okay. It does not, it does not stand. Okay, then the second one is the modification that was made here, language needed for the project to be financed. Our attorney had no problems with that. Are we in agreement? We have consensus on that? Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the revised language in this section. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Can I move approval to accept the whole contract with those changes?
I'm just wanna make, we had, we had that change on 23.
I'm just kidding.
Okay. We wanna make sure we got 23 covered. And that, that language that we had some discussion on regarding the-
This one?
No, that one's, that one we've just, we're okay with. The language regarding the, it's in, on page five, where it was the intent of the parties. Remember, we struck, we took that language out.
Oh, right.
I just wanna make sure that it's out. I'm not positive that it's out. So it would be in-
Page five?
Well, it's, it's section five.
C four.
Yeah, it's four.
Correct.
On page five, four, it's section-
Right, so we would be-
B market study.
Yes, we're deleting the first sentence that starts. It is the intent of the parties.
Right.
Yes.
Show me again. What section is it?
Page five.
We're deleting that whole sentence?
Yes.
Which pa- page five?
Page four.
Oh.
So then it'll just start before the submission of the building-
Yes, yes. At the plans for improvement, before the submission of the building permit.
Yes, the paragraph will start before the submission of a building permit application for the additional phased improvements. The city's planning and urban design staff will review the proposed additional phased improvements for consistency with the intent of the parties pursuant to the agreement.
C three?
Four. It's right before the paragraph that says time deadlines.
So the whole first sentence is being struck?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm obviously in a different version here.
Because you think it adds a little vagueness?
Yes.
Okay.
And then that's where the urban design at all came?
Yeah, which is still our intent without the vagueness.
Are you okay with that, John?
I'm not sure. I'm seeing where-
It's on page five of the contract. At the very bottom.
The clean contract or the red line of the contract?
Clean.
The clean one.
Then it would start with if during the review process?
No.
Before the submission.
Before the submission.
Before the submission of a building. Before the submission of a building permit application for the additional phased improvements, the city's planning and urban design staff will review for consistency with the intent. That whole, that stays.
It is two, it can't be two B, two C.
It's there.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
The bottom.
C, additional phased improvements.
John, do you want this copy?
John, you want to see one of these copies here?
That's fine.
That's David's copy, so can you pass that down?
So should I say move approval?
Yes, you may.
Move approval with the changes.
Second.
I'm sorry, could we identify what that, yes, section or a paragraph?
Page five, paragraph four, no, actually, let's say B markets, under market study, master planning, item four, page five.
It's under C, additional phased improvements.
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Yes, it's the first sentence is eliminated. All right, so it's been moved. Do we have a second?
And we, we have others.
So, all right, first change, I'll try this. First change is under paragraph five, C four, deleting the first sentence of that paragraph. The second change is the insertion of the language that was provided as it related to the reverter parcels and that is in-
Five, C five.
Section called time deadlines, buyer's failure to complete the additional phased improvements.
What is the number?
Five, C five, I see it as.
Five, C five.
Mm-hmm.
No.
No.
Well, I've got five, yeah, it's five, C four, is it? I mean, six?
No.
Maybe looking at different drafts.
It's under five.
If it's under, is it under buyer's failure to complete the additional phased improvements?
Yes.
All right, whatever that number turns out to be.
Okay.
That's where it will be.
You have a copy up, please?
The, and I think the final change is in paragraph 23, where we insert the word "not" in the last sentence, which in my draft reads similarly, "The parties shall," we would insert, "not refrain from refusing to take any action which may reasonably necessary to further ineffectuate this agreement."
David?
I think that's it.
The one piece for this, the document that John gave us?
Yes.
It's on the 12th line down toward the right side of the page on item, under time, roman numeral V, five, time deadlines, second paragraph, 12th line down to the right, and that's where it starts, I believe. Just where I'm referring to?
Okay.
Page six?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at page six and it's under, my version has it under paragraph Roman VI.
Yours has a different copy than his.
But-
Roman numeral V?
VI. Buyer's failure to complete the additional phased improvements.
Okay, look down 12 lines down.
Yeah.
To the right side of that, if buyer has not completed all of additional phased improvements, that's what this is.
Yeah, yeah, it's in that, that's-
It's in that section.
Oh, okay. I thought you were, I thought you were having trouble finding it.
No, no, I found it. I'm having trouble squaring the numbering.
Yeah, because on ours, it doesn't have V one, VI.
It doesn't have VI.
Ours is different than yours.
That's correct. There was, yeah.
Okay, so we should have VI in here?
It should be the next section.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion.
Move approval with those changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with the changes that we have identified and our city clerk has inaugurated, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will-
Clean it up?
Clean it up and send it to the buyer, make sure that we've got everything before the mayor has the opportunity to sign.
Would you like our office to send that over to you for reviewing and potentially, I'm still in town tomorrow. If we could sign the document tomorrow, that would be fabulous.
Mikhail prepared this version. I think I'd be more comfortable with Mikhail doing that, but she can do it.
Is she able to do that? That's wonderful.
She's very capable. She's probably working on it right now.
Perfect.
It's probably true.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're looking, obviously, for great things. And the next time I go to Fisherman's, I want to see that center corridor done. That's, let's see, that's tonight, maybe? No, I give you a whole week. Lots of good luck. Thank you. And again, we do look for great things happening. And as I've mentioned to other people who have talked about this and asked questions, you know, why are we doing this? Why are we giving, quote, "giving it away"? You know, this is not a good deal. My perspective is that your development of this property will just urge other developers to, again, put a fire perhaps under them to get other things done in our city. So I really do think that this is the beginning of some very, very great things. Thank you.
And I'd just like to point out that we didn't give them anything. They gave us everything we asked for. I think we gave them one thing, but it was a typographical error.
I tried.
Again, thank you again. We are now going to move to the discussion of the Vietnam Memorial Wall and landscaping concept. Do we need citizens' comments?
Good morning. Mark Gering. Before I start, we've asked the chairman of the committee, General Carr, Dick Carr, to come up and give us a brief introduction to the project and where they're going with it.
Thank you. General Carr, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, council members, David and Howard, I'm gonna start by thanking the council for their very, very strong support of the project and the staff for their extraordinary expertise and diligence in pursuing all of the technical aspects of this project. Most of you are familiar with it and familiar with the purpose. In order to save time, I would like to just bring you up to date and allow you to ask questions. As of right now, our donations stand at 250, $2,000 and change. And with 150 from the state, would, would bring it up to about 400. And we've already paid 53 to a granite company as a down payment. And you all are familiar with Mark's estimate of 507,000. So we're close. And a development, a recent development, which you may not be familiar with, the granite company has agreed to use 40-inch panels instead of the 20-inch individual panels.
Wonderful.
And with that change, the price of the granite is going up a bit. But we have now a firm commitment from the installer, which will save us in the neighborhood of $30,000. And we're working through an issue which some of you are familiar with. And I'll turn it over to Mark or answer your questions.
Mark, do you want to go first and then we can have open questions, okay?
Sure. The color picture there in the, in the background, that's what we've come up with the plan. We have researched and researched over and over the, the actual wall in Washington DC to try to make ours as realistic as possible. It's a half-scale, 50% scale, half the size. But we are carrying forth the, the lighting concept that they have, the, the angles and the slopes that they have in Washington DC, all of the other Vietnam walls that we've seen traveling around and have been built in other places. They're basically a triangle wall with names on it, and that's about as close as they are to what they have in Washington DC. Ours is matching it almost to the T.
Wonderful.
We're negotiating right now with the same company that built the lighting for, for Washington DC, whether or not they can supply us with lighting. It's a very fancy light that has a bezel on it that actually shines just on the wall and nowhere else. We're seeing if they can come up with something that's in our price range. The, the lighting for Vietnam in DC was over a million dollars, so we're seeing if they can come up with something.
Something a little bit more conservative in price.
It's very close to what we need.
One reason continues.
Down at a different scale. And our sidewalk will be pavers and not granite like, like in Washington DC, but it'll have the same effect, same coloring and that sort of thing. Joan is here to talk about the landscaping. I see that's probably of more interest. Everybody can kind of visualize the wall, but she can tell us what we're gonna do there for landscaping, if you want to get into that.
Okay, I guess my question would be, and maybe General Carr can answer this, is that what are we looking at now in terms of the remaining needed funds to be raised? Do we know?
With everything I know right now, we are looking at somewhere around $50,000 more.
Now, there was an issue, as you were alluding to before, about the etching rather than engraving. Where are we on that? Was that included in the 50,000?
No, it is not. It was, it was basically unfortunate because a group of people sort of assumed we were gonna get a 50, or a $5 million wall for $85,000. And didn't realize we, we were giving up something in that process and it just, it escaped. And furthermore, as you know, we originally had, we're working with Eagle Granite, and the person who brokered the deal left. And then Eagle refused to honor that commitment. So we went with another company, which was a bit more expensive, but, but still in the ballpark of what we thought we could do. And again, assumptions were made by a group of people that, you know, everything would be like they saw before. And of course, I realized we were giving things up and at the last second, other people didn't. So that's where we are right now. And as of this morning, we're working with CNR Graphics to come up with paper and materials that will hopefully rub on etching instead of engraving. And if you have any questions on it, I have granite with me that's etched, engraved, and double etched.
Thank you. Yes.
If I may.
Yes.
Some, as the process, as the general was explaining, as the process was developing, it was, it was, it came to light that the, the rubbings, which so many of the veterans think are very important, when they, when they go to the wall, they want, they want to be able to take a rubbing. And the, the etched granite doesn't give off the same type of rubbing on the paper that they had anticipated. So they're exploring a different type of paper, which if used on etched granite, will give that rubbed effect. And if that doesn't work, then there may be some consideration to spending, stop me if I'm wrong, spending some or trying to raise some more money to go to an engraved wall rather than an etched wall. So I think that's where we kind of are right now. Is that correct, General?
We have a firm bid on engraving as well, skin cutting. It's called 442,000 more.
So that's, again, a significant jump then in fundraising needed.
That's a big jump.
Well, I, I think Rick Tuss's concept of using apps and having an iPhone app or a smartphone app that would allow people to capture pictures, I think those are, things are changing. I don't know if rubbing is where people will be going with things, but well, but anyway, we need to, I appreciate what you are doing, Mr. Chairman, and how you're handling the situation with your team.
Thank you very much. I personally feel that, first of all, in, at, at the Punta Gorda wall, you have to have a smartphone to find the name. We don't plan on a kiosk or a computer graphic screen there. And I must agree with you, Nancy, that in this day and age, probably people might rather have a picture than an actual rubbing because then you could send it to your friends, family, relatives, whomever.
Well, thank you for your, for your work on it. And I'm just so pleased with our staff really working to have our wall be a replica of the Vietnam wall in Washington. Nancy?
I have a question, a landscaping question that maybe Joan can answer.
And I think Joan is gonna be coming in.
As I was looking through all the plans and I noticed all of the material, the, the plant materials that you have around, but I didn't notice any trees. And one of the things that people talk about, it's the lack of shade. And I didn't know if there were things that, because the wood structure, if that would, has an impact on the wall itself, so we couldn't, or-
For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design, we did discuss that. And the original wall, we wanted to maintain that referency for the wall. So no trees are on the wall in, in Washington. They are behind it farther, further away. So we maintain that same level. We will be adding additional trees in the park as time continues, possibly through the Arbor Day program or something like that. But there are trees planned for the section over by one of the plaza areas. And then we'll add accordingly. There will be many trees left in the front of the parcel. Some of the trees will be removed due to the elevation changes that need to occur. Once that happens, we'll adjust accordingly and visualize where they can go without, you know, changing the look of the wall.
Thank you.
Yes, Tom?
I'd just like to say we've come a long way from a little over a year and a half ago when we were talking about the concept of accepting a tired, old, traveling metal wall that could have appeared and lastly. And I just want to compliment everybody that has, has been involved with the fundraising efforts, our city council's efforts. Terrific job and we'll see it soon.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions of Joan with regards to landscaping?
I mean, what is, what are we supposed to know? That it's gonna cost us money? I mean-
My understanding was they were looking for Home Depot to contribute to the cost of the landscaping.
Okay, and what about irrigation?
Irrigation has not been included as of yet. We typically don't do that as part of the staff. That will have to be contracted out.
Okay, but is it in?
It's-
Mark Gering. The cost estimate for the landscaping and the irrigation is in the proposal that we've given with our cost estimate.
Okay.
It's, we've taken the project on that everything on the far side of the pond, which is the wall, everything that needs to be changed there, is on the committee to, to pay for.
Okay.
The only thing that we've dedicated from the city here is, is our staff time in, in designing it and giving them guidance.
So do.
And maintenance of the grounds thereafter.
So that will be still a significant contribution that the city is making?
Yes.
And as I recall, the county has not yet weighed in with any particular contribution. Is that correct?
That's correct. Well, we have a meeting, I believe it's September 19th, if I'm correct, with the county.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We wish you well. Thank you. Appreciate that very, very much. We will now move on to the Harbor Walk amenities, the bicycle wayfinding signs and trails that teach.
Who's putting, who's putting up on the screen?
Good morning. My name's Bob Armstrong.
Welcome.
I'm a resident of Earth Store Isles. Been a full-time resident of that community for over the last 25 years. And I am currently the co-chairman of the Team Punta Gorda Bicycle Friendly Committee. We're here today to make two presentations. I will do the first part. I'm gonna talk about some amenities. The, the city has developed the Harbor Walk bicycle trails and paths, eight miles of them, into four different segments. And we're talking about putting some signage up there. You can see that. I won't read all of it, but bicycling is an upcoming activity in our community. We have a loner bicycle program from Team Punta Gorda that hosts over 5,000 riders in the last year. But one of the things that is missing on all of our pathways is adequate signage. If you have traveled those eight miles, you will find basically no signs indicating of what the, the pathways are, where they are, and what they do. I'll think of the next slide. I think it's the next slide. Our committee, the Bicycle Friendly Committee of Team Punta Gorda, was organized to do two things. One, to help Punta Gorda become a more bicycle-friendly community, as the title entails, and also to assist the city of Punta Gorda in achieving the League of American Bicycleists Bicycle Friendly Community designation. As you're probably aware, the city has applied for this designation twice over the last eight years and has not received the designation. They have received a honorable mention and we want to encourage and support their efforts to receive this designation. The team is made up of a lot of people. Our partners from the community include the city's bicycle coordinator, Mitchell Austin, who attends all our meetings, the city police department, who has a bicycle patrol, the fire department, which has a medics on bikes program, the city, or the county health department is involved, the metropolitan planning organization is represented, and the school district, as well as the bicycle club, the Peace River Riders, Yakimi Bike Shop, and individual community members. We meet once a month at the Lashley Community Room. If you're all invited, they're open meetings. They're on the second Monday of every month at 3:00. We have upwards to, in the, in the season, over 30 members that attend these meetings and you're all invited to attend. Here is a wayfinder sign that we're proposing. Right now, we would like to put two new signs on the east and west ends of the Harbor Walk. The Harbor Walk runs along the, the river. It is about two miles in, in length. The east end would be down by the hospital and the west end would be the intersection of the Harbor Walk and Linear Park. Those would be two new wayfinder signs. In addition, if you can still hold on there, in addition, we would, we would like to put a, a sign on the Lashley Marina Building. You're in the process of building a Harbor Walk behind the Marine Building. And by putting it on the building, we are able to save some funds because we don't have to put up a full sign. Additionally, we will have additional signs replacing two existing information signs that, one is at the parking garage and the other is on Linear Park near Gil Street. So those are the five signs that we are proposing to do. That is a map of that. The graphic designer has laid it out in kind of a subway format. You can see the, the top of it is where it ends at the, the medical center. The blue line comes down, that's the Harbor Walk. Connects with the yellow line there, which is the Linear Park. And off of that is the Shreve Street MRT, which connects over at 41 with the 41 MRT, which extends four miles southward along 41 to the end of the city property, which is approximately in the intersection of Taylor Road and 41. Okay, I think that's, covers that pretty much. Next slide, please.
I think the next one is, is our, our part.
Okay.
Do you want to see if you have any questions there or...
Okay, I guess that's pretty much it. It is fully funded. We have received a grant from the Charlotte Community Foundation to cover the cost of it. The grant is for information, safety, bicycle safety, education. It covers two items, one, the signage, and also a website, which we are in the process of bringing online. That should be up in the next couple of months. The signs not only show the routes, but it offers, also references the website so that people can get more information about bicycle safety and other additional routes which are available in the community. The timeline for doing this project is approximately eight weeks and it should fall in line with the coming online of our website in early November. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Bob, I, I just think that the signage is wonderful and want to thank the committees and all the individuals that are involved. This looks very much like what we see in other cities in terms of wayfinding. My only, and again, looking at where the placements are, it would be nice to have a sign sort of around Gilchrist Park so that people would also see it who would just go to the park there, but perhaps that might come in the future.
Personally speaking, I hope this was the first signage that goes on and would encourage the city council to consider additional signage. We have a MRT trail that runs four miles along 41, which has no signage. And the Gilchrist Park area is going to be developed, as you know, in the next year or two. That's why we're not putting, proposing a sign there now. But I would hope the city might find in their budget the, the funds to do that, as well as additional signage, perhaps at Lashley Park and some additional places along the way.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Rachel?
Yeah, I've looked over this with Mitchell a week or so ago and I think the new, the new sign is cleaner and, and better than what we had before because the urban design people had their little flair to it. So we, we cleaned it up just a little bit for the regular casual user, I guess I'll say. One thing, two things. I don't like the font, Punta Gorda at the top, or the sun. I think it should be even cleaner than what it is. And I also think that Cooper Street should be added on here as the east boundary because as it is right now, it, it kind of just, you kind of just lose where you're at. And for me, Cooper Street is a, a main drag, which we do have plans to put, what are we calling it? A MRT down Cooper Street eventually.
Right.
So I think adding that on there at least gives people a frame of reference on the east side. So those are the two things. The top, I think, could use a little cleaner design. I, I don't mind the little bike chain. That's cool. But I also think that Cooper Street should be added.
Okay. Take that under consideration with our graphic designer.
Yes. That was going to be my question, is how easy is it to add? Because we are, in the next few years, we will be adding to the MRT system and that really will be something that...
Yes. Yeah. The eventual, the, the original plan was to have a ring around the city, as you're, you're all aware. And the Cooper Street extension is in Howard's long-range plan, I believe. Is that correct, Howard?
Your plan?
I didn't know it was my plan.
I was going to say.
Yes, we have in the one cent, 1% sales tax. We have Cooper Street and Airport Road linking to the US 41 MRT. And it's in the out years, but the funds are there.
Yes, Tom?
So, yes, there will be additions to the sign and updates as we go forward. Correct.
And in terms of the future funding for the, for these, for the additional signage down the road, I would hope that you stay friendly with the Charlotte Community Foundation?
I would hope so. Yes.
Now, the Mitch, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, you know, maybe even at the top, putting our Punta Gorda, it's happening on the harbor up there.
In other words, use our, our logo.
The new logo.
The new logo.
The new logo.
The new logo and pathways. That, that would be, I think, a very good suggestion.
Okay.
Nancy?
I think it's a great project. I like it. Wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
But you get five of us here giving recommendations about design. You have to be careful.
One more thing. What about adding the city seal at the bottom?
We, we tried to work with the, the city through the bicycle coordinator, meeting all the specifications and needs and we can, we can make modifications, but this is basically what we came up with after about a year's discussion.
And it would be nice to have the seal at the bottom. Three is always a good number.
I can't see the bottom one, so I'm not sure.
It just has team and the Charlotte Community Foundation.
Well, what about all of the other wafering signs that we have? Do we have to go back and put the seal on those?
It is, isn't it?
Eventually, when we change them.
Well, these are the ones that we have that are like this are going to be changed out.
Right. I mean, eventually, when the signs, you know, we can get a uniform.
I would like the city, if the city is endorsing this, I would like for us to have a city seal on it. It should be.
If, if I can show one more picture, maybe it would clarify a little bit of the design. I guess this probably was not originally in your package, but do we have a slide projector that could put something up here?
Yes.
If I can find it. It, it does have a flag on the side of it, the post. I guess I don't have that with me now. But it does say Share the Lane, which is the theme of the, the whole project and the website. It is, you know, bicycle oriented, will have education and safety regulations on there. But we will take your, your suggestions under advisement.
One of the things that this map does, and I think for our entire city, is that it provides also a walking map. So I, I appreciate that it's coming from the bicycle-friendly community, but at the same time, we're looking at walkers, we're looking at bicycles, we're looking at runners, we're looking at people that just want to enjoy the pathways. So, and I appreciate that it's coming from the bicycle community, but I do hope that we kind of look at it more broadly since we would like maybe using the similar kind of style around our community. Nancy?
Well, the League of American Bicycleists Initiative actually supports being pedestrian-friendly as well as, as bicycle-friendly. And that's one of the things that they're, they encourage, so...
Yes. Yeah, the verbiage on the sign will talk about, you know, path safety and use these by both pedestrians and bicyclists.
I'd like the last thing on it that says smile.
Yes. Okay.
Any other comments?
If there's no further questions, then I'll turn it over to Ann for the second part of the presentation.
Yes, Rachel?
What are carry lights? Nighttime use, oh, nighttime use carry lights. Nighttime use carry lights. What does that mean?
To carry a light. Right?
At nighttime, carry a light. Nighttime use carry lights.
Oh, bicyclists need to carry lights. That's one of the safety regulations at night.
Okay.
Maybe there needs to be a semicolon there.
Yeah.
Nighttime use colon, carry lights, kind of thing, just...
Okay.
Okay. Ann?
Okay, great. I'm Ann Taylor, chairman of the Team Maritime Committee. And Thomas, do you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
I'm Thomas Hacker from Charlotte Harbor Environmental Center.
And today, we'd like to talk to you about a project, a new project that we're introducing and get your approval to continue to move forward with that. And we are calling this program Trails That Teach. I think you guys are familiar, obviously, with the Parks That Teach Program, where there are monthly talks by master gardeners about native plant species. Well, the Trails That Teach Program is a series of informational signs along Harbor Walk. They will focus on environmental and conservation messages related to the Charlotte Harbor and the estuary, and they will be supplemented by monthly talks by the Charlotte Harbor Environmental Center. And they'll focus on ways that you, how, answer questions about the estuary, get the public more aware of the estuary, and ways that they can actually support and preserve our harbor, which is a great natural resource for us. We are applying to the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program for a grant to fund three signs at this point in time, which we're labeling as Phase One of the project. Also, the Nature Conservancy has come to the city and asked to install a sign that would be focusing on the value of the oysters as a filtering system and possibly mangroves. So this, even though they're separately funded, we'll be coordinating with them and their sign would be installed in the area kind of near their current oyster reef project This is a collaborative project. Team Punta Gorda is going to manage the project, but the environmental center will be actually developing the messaging and the graphics that would go on each sign and obviously developing the talks and conducting the talks each month. The estuary program would approve the messages that would go onto the signs. And we've already been working very closely with a design studio on the proper design, ensuring that it conforms to the city approvals, et cetera. We have some obvious solutions that would be doing the graphic design and we've gotten some bids from Lead Designs on the signs themselves. The signs will conform to your approved city standard for an interpretive sign. This is the example of an interpretive sign here. This one is obviously historical in nature, but our signs would be similar with graphics and the messaging would be related to conservation. And in case you're not familiar, these signs are not high, they're, they're lower, they're like, what, three feet tall? They're at a 45-degree angle and they really allow, I guess, for wheelchair handicapped access from that standpoint.
Now, did staff work with you in the design of the signage in terms of the, the posts and the tilt, et cetera?
This is, this is all from their, your approved standards that were back from, what, 2000, whenever? So these are, these will be followed to, and that's what we have gotten the estimate based on, and they'll be... In case you weren't, everybody was wondering, well, what types of messages would we be putting on there? This is just an example of what might be on there, certainly not. Tom and his staff would be developing like a storyline and then we would be developing each sign, what's, what would be appropriate in that storyline and be supported by graphics. Thomas, I don't know if you'd like to talk about signs and just to talk about, you know, what's normal? You don't put a lot of...
Yep. Basically, the, the signs, oddly enough, you try to limit to around 35 words. People can remember five things per visit and then typically signs are written at the sixth grade level. I don't know if the Charlotte Suns about this, what level are you guys at? But it's, it's much lower than you realize and so it's going to be quick and easy. If they're too much, you see people using their phones to take pictures and they hope to read it later and we know we never read those later, so it's going to be fun and...
We also hope that we can put a QR scan code or whatever that would, would allow people to go to websites where they could get more information and obviously information on the monthly talks, so that that would be important.
I was hoping that that would be part of it.
Yes. Yeah, that's our plan.
It would also be nice to have that part of the pathway sign as well, to have the QR codes.
They have it?
They have it? I didn't see it on there.
Yeah.
The Share the Lane website, it goes to that.
Okay.
And it even says, go to sharetelane.com. The website name is on there and the QR code was on there.
Okay, I did, guess I did, I missed it.
If I may, I, I have the graphic, I found the graphic that shows the sign. If you could bring this up on the projector.
Okay. Are we finished with this area yet? Let's finish this one.
Well, we're, we're not yet, but, so we'll come back to that. We have, due to the construction at Gilchrist and in the western section of Harbor Walk, our Phase One signs would be installed on the eastern section. We have just identified by the red star several locations where signs could be located. Obviously, as the messages are developed and the graphics are chosen, we'll come back with specific locations and recommendations and then come back to you with those at that point in time. But obviously, we'd like to have a vista and you'd like to have enough room that someone can step off the, the pathway and read the sign and et cetera. That's our hope in that perspective. We just have a timeline. The grant is due to the National Estuary Program this month. They should be announcing awards in November. And as soon as we get hopefully a positive nod from then, we'll be starting the project. We hope to be coming back to you no later than April with a final design and a recommendation of installation locations. We have a ribbon cutting here in July. We'd love to move that up, but I just don't know if it's possible. We do have to have the project finished if we get the grants by the end of August. So unfortunately, with our timing, it may not be at the greatest time of the season. So unfortunately, with our timing, it may not be at the greatest time of the season. But we'll be working with Estuary Program and try to speed that up as much as possible.
Questions, comments? Yes, Rachel?
One concern, and this is more for staff, on the little, you know, on the Harbor Walk where there's that lookout point, how will we install the sign so it's not interfering with pedestrians and bicycles? Are we, because it's kind of a.
We're going to have to look at each of those locations to make sure the sign is capable of fitting there.
Okay.
There may be a different way to attach it if we need to, but we'll first identify those appropriate areas and then make any concessions or try to make it work.
So we don't impede any of the traffic?
Correct. That's, it's designed to go off of the path, so we don't do that and have people backing up into the path. So we want to make sure we have enough area for them.
Okay, and then my other question, piggybacking on the pathway signs, how many logos? I mean, are we, I'm guessing that the pathway signs, the logos were supposed to be on there because they've been funded by, and that may have been one of the criteria for the grant. So I'm just, I just want to know, are we going to have like Chinep and Check and how many logos? Yes, we are.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
We're doing the work for logos.
When we get to the master design, we'll see it like we saw the other sign today and be able to comment.
Yes, yes. And the city, obviously, we'll have the city on there as well.
Keep the city seal on there.
Yes, we will do that. Oh, and we are asking for, there's a draft letter of support. Would we like to get your signature on if possible today? Because we have a draft that's due to the Estuary Program.
Understood. My question is the posts that the signs sit on, is there anything more attractive that could be used there?
It has been, I'm sorry, David Hilston, our design manager, that has been our standard. It's important in the way finding that you keep that standard going. So from that standpoint, we can take a look at it and see what we could come up with.
Where would I see it in a sign that's, pardon? The Blanchard House one now, okay.
You don't really notice them because they're below you.
Because they're below the thing. Nancy?
Yeah, this is a wonderful project. It's been part of the vision that I think we've had for quite a long time of helping educate the community about the harbor and knowing that where the funding is coming from. These are not historical markers, but in your presentation, you mentioned history. So I know that the Punta Gorda History Center, I'm sure, would be glad to work with you if you have any need for historical information. But having worked with CHNAP in the past, when they fund something, when I worked on a project, and we put historical information, they said, did the historical society fund this? And we said, no. And they said, okay, and out it went, so.
Yes, I mean, we are hoping in another phase that some historically oriented signs may be a part of that in appropriate areas, but obviously, this first one would be conservation oriented.
I mean, there's lots of history to tell about our harbor as well, so.
Exactly, I agree. And I think it would, it would be nice to mix it up so that it's not all.
I know that Fisherman's Village is planning on making their part of the Harbor Walk a history walk. So it may be in working with Patty Allen that they might be able to use this concept. I know she wants to put her own touch on it, but.
Okay, great.
It's an opportunity.
Yes, Tom?
Wonderful project. Shows that we're really committed to getting the word out about how we feel and appreciate where we live.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for your time.
Well, thank you all for all your hard work. This is, again, a wonderful project. Want to thank the team again and all of the, and Chinep and, I mean, all of the.
Let's not thank them yet because we don't have a grant.
Well, that's true. That's true. But I'm going to sign a very good letter.
Yes.
Great.
I'm going to sign a very good letter of support, so hopefully.
Bob had a photograph he wanted to see.
I do have the slide of the proposed wayfarer sign. It shows the, you can bring that up. It does show the signage along the side of the post. No input. There it is, okay. Share the Lane is the theme of the whole thing. The pathways need to be shared by pedestrians as well as bicyclists, and roadways the same. Share the Lane is the name of the website that we will have in reference to that. The chain link is kind of our logo along that line. In addition, what I also mentioned, wanted to mention was that both Team Punta Gorda and the bicycle coordinator for the city will be presenting to the city council plans for achieving the League of American Bicycleists designation next month. So we will have some ideas for you to consider at that time. Thank you.
Yes, Rachel?
The ribbon.
Yes.
Would it be more helpful to put sharetelane.com, or do you think just the word share the lane?
It says sharetelane.com, and there's a scanning device up here for your smartphone that will take you directly to the website. But you can't read it here, but there is the website.
Well, I'm talking about on the ribbon, the whatever we call that thing.
On the side there?
Yeah, sidebar.
Well, the sidebar was suggested and agreed to by, you know, the bicycle coordinator, the city, and the team.
Are we going to get too busy if we add more letters?
It's kind of busy now.
Yeah, it is busy, and I think it almost is too big.
Would you like another mockup, I guess?
I mean, do we have that ribbon deal on the side? The ribbon, what are we calling that sidebar?
Basically a ribbon.
I mean, I think it's cleaner without that.
I would agree. It doesn't do anything, I mean.
What it does on the, on the original system was identify geographical zones that you were in that equated to the colors as well. This was just added up for your suggestion.
Do you want to have the colors ribbons on there or not?
I don't think it's necessary. I would like the, even the, I don't know, Share the Lane, it's.
I like it.
You like the ribbon?
Yeah, oh, yeah. I think it puts a, it says Share the Lane, and that's what we're trying to drive. We get emails from people. We get emails from pedestrians and cyclists that complain about each other. And what we need to do is educate people on how we should work, interact together on the Harbor Walk and on our pathways. And that's what this does. The chain itself is.